I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, September 23rd, 2024. We are at the MECC and the time is 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
We are very excited that Principal Cindy Anderson is here to introduce some Ramona Mustangs to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I brought some second graders with me, and we'd like to begin by saying Happy International Day of Sign Languages. As you may know, all of our students in all of our K-4 classrooms are doing number corners every day as part of our math curriculum, and our district diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging team added these squares on important days so students could learn about different ways we can be included in belonging, and today it's all about sign language. Last year as a part of inclusion and belonging, the Ramona DEIB team did a one book run, One Ramona, with a book called A Day With No Words, and that book focused on a little boy who used a communication device to communicate. We got grants from the D-39 Ed Foundation for both Braille panel and communication boards, and then we worked with our hearing itinerant teacher to teach our students sign language. So tonight, these students are going to perform our school song with sign language for you. So first, I'm going to have these students from Ms. Boyle and Ms. Parker's class introduce themselves.
My name's Haley.
My name's Nora.
My name's Camille.
My name's Willem.
My name's Tara.
My name's Odin.
My name's Clark.
My name's Adam.
My name's Jamison.
My name's...
My name's Brian.
Okay, and now we're ready for our song.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ms. Rich. And I am going to show you how to sign the Ramona Rocks School Song. Okay, are you ready? Great, here we go. The first thing is the Ramona Rocks chant. So this is... All right, let's do our Ramona Rocks song. Here we go. Remember to start soft. Ready, your turn. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. R is for respect. R is for golden rule. Originality. Your song is for courage. Try being brave. Kindness to everyone. Care for each other. Last but not least is sincerity. Ramona school is where we want to be. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. Ramona rocks. Nice job, everybody. You did so well. You totally got this. Very proud of you.
Way to go Mustangs.
Now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming to teach us your song. I am so proud of you for learning sign language and for doing something that's going to make people feel more included. And I was listening to your song, and I was thinking as you were singing it, like, you guys definitely rock, and you're brave, and you have courage, and I think I missed a couple of the other parts, but those were the parts I remembered and I focused on. And then I have a surprise for you. So you're going to get in a little line over here, and I'm going to give each one of you a present, and then you can go out this door and meet your parents in the hallway. Thank you so much. You are the best part of our meeting. Thank you so much. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the August 26th, 2024 Board of Education Budget Hearing and Regular Meetings.
I move to approve the Board of Education minutes for the August 26th, 2024 Budget Hearing and Regular Meeting.
I seek a second.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any errors, comments, or omissions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes, motion carries. This is the first opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any community members who wish to speak at this time? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and community of residence, and you will have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, I'm Joshua Elske. I'm of East Glenview, so I'm Ramona District. I'm a parent of one Willmet Class of 2023 graduate and a current fourth grader Ramona who goes to New Chirr. My daughter does. So they both of my kids have IEPs. My only concern, situation is that we had to choose between parent-teacher nights. I had to choose one night, and the other one had to choose the other night, and that was a big influence with us because both my kids have IEPs, and it put us in a bad position to have to choose between what child to go to schools. So I'm asking that the Board maybe choose coordination between the high school and the district about where the open house nights are so we don't have to pick and choose between each of our children going to each night so we can actually attend my, see my, me and my children's teachers. That's it, and thank you.
Thank you so much for that feedback. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board at this time? Okay, we are going to move on to board reports. We're starting with the facility development. Mrs. Kim.
Thank you. The board received an estimated budget update on the summer 2025 Willmet Junior High First Floor Air Conditioning renovation project. At the 85% design level, the estimated budget is $3.65 million, down from $4.2 million, $4.24 million at the 60% design level. The project is currently out to bid with a bid opening date in early October and possible board approval at the October Board of Education meeting. A small capital project on the boilers and mechanical equipment at Central showed additional items needing repairs prior to heating season for the boilers, plus some repairs needed in order to run air conditioning in a portion of the classrooms. These additional repairs have pushed the total cost over the $50,000 bid threshold. The current expected total cost is projected to fall between $115,000 and $145,000. Upon completion of the repairs and when all final costs are known, the board will be asked to approve a resolution for the emergency repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. We did not have a school finance committee meeting this month, so we will move on to strategy committee. Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
Yes, so the strategy meeting, the board received an in-depth review of the strategic action plan steps for the school year during the September 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting. So following the district strategic advisory team, DESAT is what it's called, review of these plans, the board reviewed and provided feedback as well. A final presentation and approval of these proposed action steps will be provided later on in this evening's agenda, and that's it.
Thank you. We're moving on to liaison reports. Community Review Committee, or CRC, Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So yeah, I was able to attend the organizational meeting, can you guys hear me, for the CRC? How's that?
Better.
On Tuesday, the 10th, and during that meeting, the CRC organized itself and came up with a topic. So it was a great meeting. Dr. Kremis-Cooly was there as well, and I think I have the topic here, so bear with me. It's how do belonging and friendship intersect with development and transitions in a digital age? So yes, it's a lot to process. So basically, how we can use technology to kind of, you know, develop friendships and maintain connections between home and school. So it's really exciting, great group.
And I think they also were discussing how technology sometimes gets in the way.
Oh, yeah.
So really investigating both aspects of that. They had a really in-depth discussion because they had several really great ideas, and they merged a couple to come up with this topic. So I think it's going to be a really useful report and a lot of research for them to do.
Seems very timely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, thank you. Educational foundation, we're going to stay with Mr. Caesaretti, who was kind enough to go to both of those meetings this month.
I got to go to that one, too. So that was on Wednesday, the 18th, and they organized themselves. Really impressive group, lots of new members. That goes actually to the CRC as well. It was a great meeting. Dr. Kremis-Cooly was there as well. And so usually they talk about fundraising the whole time, which they handle incredibly well, but they talked a little bit about GRIP grants and how they're going to, you know, we all know what that is, but maybe a lot of people don't. So I think they're going to try to promote that a bit. And just to shout out on the main events that are coming up this year, it's Paddle, Paddle Nights, November 16th, Family Bingo, January 24th, and Trivia Night, April 4th, and there may be more.
All right, thank you. Yep. We're moving on to the district strategic advisory team, or DESAT. Mrs. Paling and Mrs. Pathless.
Sure, so DESAT, as Mrs. Schneider-Fabes mentioned, met on September 5th. We previewed the recommended steps for this year and provided feedback. There was great discussion, which is now incorporated into the report that will be presented later this evening, and our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, February 13th.
Thank you. Moving on to Illinois Association of School Boards, or IASB.
Sorry, I think Bonnie had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just wondering, is the team different from last year?
Uh, if it is, it's just a little. I think most of the members are the same. I think that we might have had a few new staff members join us, teachers joining us, and a couple of parent switches, too. Katie?
There was one parent that actually in error did not get to participate last year, but is back this year, and he's great. But as far as the parent community, they are second-year participants. We have many more staff members this year than we did last year, so we're so grateful because their input is so important as well. But yeah, that's, I believe it is a different team other than the parent community and the administrators.
Yeah, thanks for that question, and I apologize for just trying to roll on with our, yeah, so yes, I need to slow it down. Okay, okay, thank you so much. Moving on to Illinois Association of School Boards, or IASB, Mrs. Pathless.
Thank you. I know some of this has been said in earlier meetings, but just a reminder that the IASB North Cook Division Meeting is taking place on September 30th of 2024 at 5:30. Registration for that is closed. Also, the IASB Joint Annual Convention is taking place on November 22nd through the 24th in Chicago, and that is still open for registration. And then the last thing just to note is for school board elections, the IASB is hosting a series of webinars for those folks that are interested in running. It's providing resources and materials to assist board candidates. And one thing to note is that the election is April 1st of 2025, but the signed nominating petitions are due a little bit earlier than years past. They are due by November 12th of 2024 through November 18th of 2024.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to legislative update, Mrs. Pathless again.
The update is very brief. The Illinois Legislature is not in session, but a veto session is scheduled to take place in the middle of November, so just hold on.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Thank you. Moving on to information items, Dr. Kremis-Cooly.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. First of all, the board did not receive any written communication as a board this month, nor did we process any Freedom of Information Act requests, but I did want to take a moment to highlight our parent ed events that are happening. This year, we're kicking our series off with an opportunity designed to highlight the benefits of free play for our students and to educate some of our parents about that. The board will remember that the CRC did an extensive review of this last year and offered a whole lot of research and insights to us. We're folding that into our strategic plan, but we are inviting families to come out to their elementary school or to High Crest to join representatives from District 39, from the Alliance of Early Childhood, from the Willmet Public Library, from the Backyard Nature Center, and more for a family adventure into creative, child-love-led free play that is meant to spark imagination and fuel growth. And then we'll also be teaching parents a little bit about what we learned through the CRC report, as will some of our partners. So those dates have been advertised in principal newsletters and will continue to be. They're all throughout October, starting first at McKenzie on October 2nd and ending at High Crest, very appropriately, on October 28th. So we invite everybody to come out and check us out.
Thank you.
Keeping it short. Because we have a big and exciting strategic plan.
You do. All right, am I turning that back over to you, the strategic plan updates?
Um, sure, that would be great. Thank you. We are really excited to be in our fourth year of our strategic plan, and so the board has been presented with our action steps. Our district strategic advisory team has as well, and both have given some feedback on those proposed steps. Our teams have taken really since the end of last school year to review and revise our progress and build out the action steps for this year. So as the board is aware, and hopefully our community is at this point, too, we've really made some tremendous progress toward accomplishing our strategic plan, which, again, is a five-year plan. We're in the fourth year of this plan, and so our action steps really reflect that. Some ongoing work, a little bit of new work this year, and some things have been accomplished, too. So we've been able to kind of look forward to what might be next for our district. So we're going to walk the board through our action steps again as they're finalized. We're presenting them today, and later on the agenda, you'll see them recommended for approval. Okay, I think Katie's going to get us started.
I'll start. At the start of each year, too, we'd like to provide some context if we have any new members or families within the district. And so just to give a little background of our 2021-2026 strategic plan, which we are very proudly in the fourth year of. In January 2021, District 39 Strategic Planning Team consisted of staff, parents, students, community members, and leaders of our community organizations, met throughout the year to engage in developing a multi-year strategic plan with the help of consultants from the Consortium for Education Change, CEC. The team collected feedback from a variety of District 39 community members, including students and members of the Board of Education during Committee of the Whole and Board of Education meetings. And detailed information and meeting materials are provided to the community through the Strategic Planning Process page on the district's website. So we invite anyone who is interested in learning a little bit of the history and our journey over the years to visit the district website to learn about that history. Then on September 27th, 2021, the administration submitted the goals and strategies of this multi-year strategic plan for Board of Education approval, and we received that approval, which then started the work to continue to develop specific action steps for the first year, 2021 to 2022. Annually, these action steps are monitored and progress updates are shared. Based on this information, the work to refine or develop our specific action steps for the following school year begins in the spring and continues through the summer, early fall, which brings us to tonight. So on behalf of all of the administrators, we respectfully submit these 2024-2025 action steps for approval to the Board of Education. Would like to acknowledge the district strategic advisory team for their contributions and input. We will begin with Goal One, Student Achievement and Growth, ensuring a differentiated instruction that provides a strong foundation of rigorous academic learning.
So the first three action steps that we have are ones that we've been working on for several years and are continuing to refine, but find that they are crucial to the work that we're doing, and so we want to maintain them as continuing action steps. They are very important in making sure that we are addressing and achieving this, our first goal. So the first one is to analyze student data after each benchmark period, and so our school-based teams are doing that after our fall, winter, and spring benchmarks. They're identifying children who might need more intervention or enrichment, and we are matching intervention and support services for students based on that in order to continue to accelerate their growth and learning. The second one is to really focus our special education staff on additional training in the areas of specialized instruction for reading, math, and writing so that we have really strong instructional strategies and resources to support our students when they do have more substantial academic and behavioral needs. And the third area is really to continue, or the third action step is to continue to engage our general education staff and their professional learning about all of our Tier One instruction, especially looking at the reading and math, kind of those core areas, the assessment interventions, and then introducing our, we're not introducing, but continuing our support with our math and reading specialists to help support that instruction of the core or the instruction that all students get in that general education classroom.
In the past few years, our district has engaged in curriculum review committees that involve teachers and administrators, and as a result of that work, we have adopted new curriculum materials that we are implementing this year and will continue to reflect upon. But we have three that we'd like to note. One is the kindergarten through fourth grade Bridges Math Program. The next one is the kindergarten through second grade UFLI Early Literacy Foundational Skills Resources, and then the fifth through eighth grade Social Studies Curriculum. We've had some updated standards that we needed to reflect on and then find some materials that would support that work. We are going to, this year, conduct a full curriculum materials review for grades K through eight English Language Arts to address all tiers of general education as well as a focus on diverse representation in the literature that we provide in our classrooms. As you heard during our pledge, we like to have a reflection of our student population accessible to our students, accessible to our teachers, to use within the curriculum, and so that is one focus that we'd like to make sure that we ensure for this year. We also continue to provide explicit instruction to students on the goal-setting process in line with students' developmental level and engage all students in the goal-setting for either class and/or individual goals across all tiers of instruction. We are preparing for the implementation of a new grade's five through eight academic schedule for 25-26 school year by finalizing the logistics and engaging staff in professional learning and the use of the set aside time for intervention and SEL instruction. I need to acknowledge Kate Dominique and Kelly Jackson, who is leading this work, with the support of others. And so the next one is launching instructional coaching to provide embedded professional learning support and foster continuous professional growth for staff. And this is, I'm going to just say that probably the most exciting one for me, too. I love all of these, but this one, Preparing For The Transition For A Full Day, Kindergarten Academic Programming For Implementation Fall of 2025. This is something that we have wanted to respond to our community so badly for so long, and we're in a position to do that, which is really exciting.
All right, Goal Two, Supportive Community Goal. To cultivate a supportive and inclusive learning community that is responsive to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of each student. So we have several action steps in this area, many of which are continuing from work that's been done and moving towards the implementation stage. But the first is providing targeted support and instruction for upstander behaviors, and this was a direct result of some of the themes we saw in our climate survey, the CSCI that we took early, or last spring, and some themes about students needing some more reinforcement on what an upstander is and how to express those behaviors, and also some parent education around those as well. The second is implementing Wayfinder social-emotional SEL curriculum in grades five through eight, and we had a pilot last year of that curriculum. It was really successful. The curriculum focuses on belonging specifically at the sixth through eighth grade levels, so there are a lot of targeted lessons, core lessons, as well as activities that we have all of our teachers across 5-8 engaging in with our students on a daily basis. Implement a new reporting tool for SEL skill development in grades K through four to supplement the behaviors that promote learning. So with all this work that we're doing on developing SEL skills and implementing new curriculum, both at K-4 and at 5-8, we want to be able to report the development of those skills to families and have students assess how they're developing as well. And then implement and integrate monthly diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, or DEIB, themes across the district, and you saw an example of that tonight, the use of the calendar squares at the elementary level. Our 5-8 staff also got copies of those that they can use in their classrooms along with a list of all of the dates for the next few years for those holidays and different recognitions of celebrations. But we're also using the themes that were developed. We, our DEIB team chose to adopt themes on a monthly basis and use literature and use lessons to implement those across the district. And then we are also really excitingly partnering with the Willmet Public Library to help promote those themes across the community. So it's a really exciting time for that one. And then expanding student connections through the creation of flexible recess opportunities, again, from the work of the CRC, really trying to find ways that we can offer students options at recess to engage in some of that free play.
With the implementation of the Tier One SEL curriculum, Everyday Speech and Wayfinder, we are also now looking to align the resources that our social workers are using when they're working with students that require more support or additional lessons or support so that we have sort of a very seamless way to support our students, that we're using the same types of language and using the same strategies with those children so that it is very aligned and, again, creates that seamless support for them. We are also defining and utilizing behavior levels, disciplinary responses, and restorative practices for our buildings. We've been doing a lot of work with foundations on behavior, and we continue to dive deeper into different areas, continuing to look at what are our overall school supports for students and making sure that we're consistent within a building so that students have the same expectations across teachers in whatever setting they're in. We're working on launching and aligning our Tier Two and Tier Three SEL resources. That goes back a little bit with kind of aligning what the social workers are doing as well so that we have a large sort of bank or library of things that we can use for students when we do require additional supports and services for those students. And we are also continuing to use responsive advisory, morning meeting, and responsive classroom. We trained all staff in these strategies a few years ago, and they are being built into our school culture so that we are continuing to work on that sense of belonging for all of our students.
All right, Goal Three is our professional community. We seek to foster a professional community that values, supports, develops, and retains highly effective staff, so looking at the adults in our school. The first four action steps are action steps that we have targeted in years past. We're continuing to look at and engage in those. We're continuing to look at and engage in those, continuing with our DESAT group that will help us, help give us feedback on our progress, on our action steps, as well as our KPIs. We will continue to seek information from staff at various points within their career. We've done this in the past couple of years through focus groups, through one-on-one conversations, but really seeking feedback on their personal experience and how we might adapt and change our practices going forward. Number three talks about engaging and making sure that we have a variety of voices on our various committees within our district, both with, in terms of experience within the profession, but also discipline. What is their focus of study and work with our students? So making sure we have a wide representation with each committee work. And then looking to see that we are addressing the professional learning needs of our teachers and our administrators. What information are they seeking for support in terms of professional development? Those are brief summaries of the first four that we've been targeting and will continue to look at this coming school year. Five through eight are newer experiences and action steps for us focused on this year. Number five is to expand student connections through the use of, sorry. Number five is review of culture and climate survey information to develop school-specific action plans. So you've heard us talk a lot about culture and climate the last couple of years. We used a new tool last year. We have some great information, and our building principals and assistant principals are looking to take action on the needs within their school. The sixth action step for us is to look at providing advanced facilitated IEP training for our student services staff. Last year, if you recall, we provided that initial training. We want to take it a step further. Action step seven is to help our parents and guardians be successful advocates for their children in the IEP process and advocating for the needs as they see them for their children in partnership with our school staff. Action step eight is pretty meaty with a lot of subpoints there, and it is a direct result of our work with the DEIB task force. And so we're really looking at specific ways in which we can attract, hire, and retain employees of color in our variety of positions that we have within the district. This is an outcome of work done by parents, administrators, teachers, support staff. It was a two-year process, and this is a result of that study and work and collaboration. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but it is great.
Goal four, family partnerships. Our two strategies, one was about transitions, both fourth to fifth and sixth to seventh. And the other one was just improving homeschool communication through different strategies that we have been using. All right. So as far as our action steps, number one was to expand the use of Power School Parent Portal, which is where we've been pushing a lot of our parent start points to, whether it's grades, attendance, fees, registration. And we began a little bit last year with assessments. We're going to continue that movement to put more assessments in there. And then they become archived so that parents can go back and pull down assessments from previous years going from this point forward. We started at the beginning of the school year with additional attendance functionality so parents can report any absences online through the portal. And we're going to take a look at if we can expand Power School access down a little bit further in the grades. Action step two is to update the parent, I'm sorry, the report card experience for parents by providing historical report card access in a clean downloadable version. Up to this point, they've been HTML versions of the report card. So by changing the way in which we do it, it'll be a nice clean PDF that parents can download, and then we'll keep the historical copies there. And then also include the use of digital signatures for the confirmation of receipt. You may recall a couple of years ago, we were looking at page views to see how many parents were accessing it. Good data, but it's not as clean, as crisp as we would want it. Plus, it's nice to have a digital receipt of a parent's signature just to ensure the fact that the official school record has made it home and, and parents have received it. So I think that's an important part of making sure the communication is clear back and forth. Action step number three, organize the district YouTube videos. We've put a lot of videos, everything from the transition work that Kelly Jackson and others have been working on, in addition to our parent events, these board meetings, and, and more. So, but we have not done a great job organizing that com, that content. So we're going to look at different ways that we can organize the content to make it a bit easier for parents to find what they're looking for. Number four, research the concept of a spring open house for incoming fifth and seventh grade students to assist with familiarity of the building and to aid with transitioning. So this would happen in the spring. That's kind of the, the new piece to this is it would happen even earlier, which some parents have given some very positive feedback on initially when they heard this. So that gives us a good feeling that, that's meeting the needs of our parents and, and just getting them in even earlier so we're not getting flooded during the summer or in the fall. And we can even adjust, like, based on that feedback, that early feedback. Maybe there's additional steps that we can take to add to the hard, all the work that's being done with transitions. Number five, focus on intergenerational communication by providing information in multiple formats to parents and caregivers. Some of this, we, we know different generations would like to receive, in a broad stroke, information in different ways. But some of the newer ways in which we're communicating with parents through our social media channels, there are some analytics behind the scenes that will tell us what age ranges are looking at. The content that may prompt Leo Kraus and to maybe adjust the wording, what gets posted, the format it gets posted, different information depending on the age ranges, that are consuming on the different channels. And as I mentioned during Cow, Committee of the Whole, it may even lead to some old-school postcards. So we've already started to dabble in a little bit with employment opportunities and getting postcards out there. But to our parents, a nice, small postcard to many of us to place on the refrigerator with just bullet points, dates, and even a QR code that will lead to more information could just be the thing that we are missing and need. And whenever I say that, I always get head nods when I look around the room. So I think we're on to something there. And the last one is host parents at events regarding the benefits of free play while providing strategies for fostering more independent play. So Dr. Kremisoli talked about the Let's Play events, that and more. Go Green Willmet, the Willmet Park District, a couple of our green teams, in addition to the people that were mentioned are going to be at many of these events. And then later on in the spring, we have, we just signed Jessie Ilhart to do a presentation. She's done a TEDx talk in regards to how play helps kids' brain grow. So she will be another opportunity for parents to learn a little bit more from an expert in the field in regards to play. Again, thanks to the Community Review Committee, CRC, for their hard work on that. It's allowed for a couple of opportunities here to help our parents learn about what free play can be. Goal five is stewardship of resources, two strategies. First one is implementing long-term capital planning focused on facility maintenance. And then the second one is examining resource allocation practices, which with a focus on staffing based upon the best instructional model and techniques. All right. So for this upcoming year, we have three action steps. The first action step is continuing to review our five-year capital plan twice a year. We've done that for, for several years. And to give you an example of something that was just completed a little over a month ago was a partial roof replacement at the Willmet Junior High. There were, there was a good bit of flooring work done there as well. There were some smaller projects done at a couple of other buildings. And then, as we talked, as was mentioned a few minutes ago, assuming everything goes well, then another, like a large project for next summer would be that first floor air conditioning renovation project at the junior high. Then the second item is focusing on building-based capital improvement projects. These projects tend to be smaller in nature. They don't necessarily require the expertise of architects or engineers to design them or bid them out, but yet they still have a lot of value, and we budget for those kinds of projects every year. You know, an example of something that we've done, like, that happens more frequently in this area would be, you know, painting, something with lightings, very minor renovations, sometimes cabinetry in a classroom. Something that maybe is more infrequent this past summer, well, every year we try to res, we have a company that resurfaces our gym floors. And one of the things that, in kind of talking with them, instead of just replacing the, the kind of like wax material on top of the wood floor, it did, two of our elementaries we went through and actually took it down to the wood level, and they sanded it and, and then re, repainted it and then put the, the finishing touches on there. And over the life of like a wood floor, you can only do that a couple of times, and then the wood floor is kind of used up. But when you take it a little step further than what we normally do, you come out with something that looks like a brand-new gym floor. So that's an example of something that we do fairly infrequently. And then the last thing is something that we'll likely, likely always do is really just keeping an eye on legislative adjustments. That could hit really any topic for us, just keeping an eye because knowing that something could rise locally, something at the, out of Springfield or even something at the federal level. And probably the biggest thing that has hit District 39 the last couple of years that would fall under this is just as we watched the progression of the legislation that mandated all, all-day kindergarten starting in the 27, 28 school year. So that is all the action steps for goal five.
I know we discussed this at the Committee of the Whole two weeks ago, but I'm wondering if, and I saw that our feedback was incorporated, so thank you. I'm wondering if board members have any comments or questions tonight about this? Yes, Mrs. Paling.
Again, acknowledgement about the enormous amount of work you're all undertaking and how thoughtful you've been to prioritize where we're headed. It's very exciting.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Pathless. I would also just like to add thanks to that and, and also just acknowledge the fact that there was a, a plan set out, whatever, however many years ago, and we're actually sticking to it. And I think that that's kind of amazing because I think that doesn't always happen. So, yeah, I think that's great.
Thank you. Good point. And I like your, how you're talking about the ongoing work that's being done for this. I was struck upon reading all this stuff in preparation for the meeting about when this all got started.
Yeah.
Which was, you know, February of 20, and then we paused. But then started in January of 2021, and I was struck on looking at that date. I mean, I remember what it was like working in a school that year. I have a really good friend who is an administrator in a nearby district, and I know what it was like for him, being an administrator in a school district that year. And I know what it was like for our families and all the stakeholders you talked about that went into making this plan, like, when it happened. It's like no small thing that this got launched when it did. And just, you know, I was kind of like, oh, yeah, it was already like a ton of work. I mean, it's always a ton of work, but that struck me this time around, reading this. And just, you know, like Mrs. Pathless said, that we're continuing to do the work. So thank you so much for that, and, and keep it up. Anybody else have anything else they want to say about it? I know we talked about it two weeks ago at the Committee of the Whole. Okay. I think we're ready to move on to annual business. Dr. Kremisoli.
Thank you. Yes, we have Dr. Swanson here with an update on our summer school and summer enrichment program. We had the exciting part of the summer enrichment program last month when the students from the STEAM class came in and did the pledge. So this is a little anticlimactic from that. But once again, we had a very successful summer enrichment program as has been in previous years. We've had three strands, sort of the hobbies and academics part, which is things like STEAM, rocketry, book club, a mixture of sort of academically focused hobby kinds of activities. We also had review and reinforcement, and that is reading and math classes that are designed for students who require additional intent, direct instruction in reading or math. And we also had extended school year for eligible students with IEPs to attend. This year, we had 229 total students that attended. It's a little bit of a mixture when we look at who, how many attended hobbies and review and reinforcement because kids can pick and choose among the different numbers. So students are sort of in multiple buckets when we look at those counts. But 229 is a reduction compared to what it's been in previous years. We have seen since the COVID year, sort of a steady kind of decline, not a recovery back to the original numbers that we used to have. And I think that in some ways that may represent sort of what our, what our families are choosing to do with their summers. We certainly have had the consistent numbers in terms of the review and reinforcement and the extended, extended school year, fewer in terms of the hobby and academic kinds of more fun classes. And I, I don't know, we'll continue to explore and try and determine whether that's because families are making choices for other programming or where that's going. But we do, we're very excited to be able to offer all of the things that we did. We have been very conscious of making sure the, that it is a cost-neutral program to the extent that we can. So you can see that, that there is, we do pay attention to that. We don't run classes unless they are full, especially for the hobbies and academics courses. So that's where we are. Does anyone have any questions about it?
Board members, any comments or questions? I will say that I thought switching it to start in July, I thought that was brilliant.
I think that we definitely have had more teachers willing to do it when they get a little bit of break at the end of the year, and they know there's going to be a little bit of break at the, before school starts again. So it also helps so students aren't kind of going through a full school year, then right into summer school, and then have a longer time off. So it sort of gives a jumpstart for the new year as well.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I think we're moving on to the support staff union letters of agreement.
Thank you. Dr. Glouacki will give a brief overview of these.
Thank you. So from time to time, we find it necessary to adjust some of the language in our contracts, our collective bargaining agreements. We're excited tonight to be able to present two letters of agreement that would adjust some provisions in the Support Staff Union contract. The first letter of agreement focuses on the workday hours for our cooks in the kitchens. Currently, our cooks work six and a half hours per day, and we're looking to change that and increase it to seven hours. This would help us accomplish some in-kitchen meal preparation for our students and the food service program in general. The second letter of agreement focuses on a stipend, creating a lead stipend for our database, website, and online systems specialist. And this aligns with the current structures that we have in place with the framework within the Support Staff, Support Staff Union contract. And this allows for some depth and recognizes leadership with various positions within the department. So we'll see that in the consent agenda.
Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to board policy review.
Nick, and I think Dr. Glouacki will give a brief overview. We have taken the feedback of board members from our last review and incorporated those. Dr. Glouacki, anything you want to mention especially?
The element that I'll add that's most notable is the legal references that have been added to each policy. And so our practice, assuming the board would like to continue with that, is that going forward, every time we review or revise a policy, we'll add those legal references in as a, as just a point of reference.
Yes, thank you. Board members, any comments about the policies? Mr. Caesar, ready?
Yeah, thanks for doing that. I know it was a big job. I, I value it a lot because of the transparency I think it provides. I don't, I mean, I personally had no idea how incredibly long the school code is and involved and detailed. So I think it definitely, you know, if somebody actually is curious about why we do what we do, see things are apparent in this exercise. A lot of what we do is based on what the law said. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good idea. Mrs. Pathless.
Also, I would just like to add my thanks for adding the legal citations. And it's really kind of amazing that that also includes case law. And it's really kind of amazing that it also includes case law as well as some statutory citations, and that is extremely helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the policies? I had a few things. I want to see if anyone else had anything else. I have a few grammatical issues. I know. I'm a language arts teacher. Come on.
We appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, are we okay with that? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, are you ready? Under two colon forty, board member qualification, we need a comma after the word office. Are we looking at that, or are we just?
Good.
What? No, I mean, I'm just, I'll suggest, and then.
Now you got me interested.
Hey.
Do you know what page it is?
It's, it's on, so it's, because remember, we just have the pages. Two colon forty. I'm in mine here. But I'm like not seeing it. Hang on.
It was there, and then.
Right.
And now you, see what I'm saying? I will note that I think the comma is actually there before the end. In the underline, it was added in, in kind of a funny way. It was taken out early and then added.
Okay, so it is there. On my online copy.
I think so.
Okay, my online copy looked like it wasn't, but there, thank you, thank you.
We'll make sure that when we go through and edit them, we keep that coming in.
You ready for this one?
One question on that one also. Just to be consistent, the last line there ends with is ineligible for school board membership. I think throughout, we're just referring to it as the board and not school board. Is that right?
Strike school.
Strike school. Yeah.
Okay. Under two colon seventy, you're really going to love this one. There's an IE, which is, you know, it est. There's supposed to be a comma after the period, after the E, just. That's, so it's two colon seventy, under vacancy, number four.
Number four.
See that? Okay. Yeah, okay, there's just a couple more. You got that one? Okay, two colon two six five. Um, where is it? On page one of that one, scrolling down. Okay, on page one, where it says Title IX Discrimination Prohibited, the second sentence needs an A at the beginning. You see what I'm talking about?
Again, I think the A is there. You just can't, it's really hard to see.
Okay, so it was hard to see on my copy. Okay.
A, district employee, the A is not crossed out.
It's not, it's not any person. It was an A.
A.
Got it. Then we're good on that. Yes, and then on page two of that, the last paragraph on page two, the first sentence looks like it needs a comma after intimidation between intimidation and threats. See where it says retaliation means intimidation, threats, coercion? There should be a comma after intimidation, correct? And then we're getting, we're nearing the end, I promise.
You did a great job.
Okay, you like that? On page three, on Title IX Sex Discrimination Prevention and Response, we need a space between six colon six zero and curriculum. Okay, that one. And then it says on number two, where is that, right? There was a place where it said sand instead of and. It's still on number.
Oh, I see it.
You see it?
The third line of point number one.
Yep, there, that one. And then this is the last one, is there's the A and the T, eight and the TH for eighth? We should get rid of that space. That was it. Okay. Thank you.
Well done. We appreciate that.
Do you? Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay. All right, thank you.
If anyone wonders if these are read closely before they're approved, you just prove that they're very closely read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then just as a, we can still approve it.
Yes.
As third and final.
I think each of those were not content driven, but typo driven.
They're not substantive, yeah.
And so, thank you.
Okay.
So yes, just approve with the corrections, with the typo corrections.
When we get to that part of the agenda, do we need to say that part? Like approved as amended?
Yes.
Okay, just. So we got that, Mrs. Hart? All right, good. Okay, so I think we're ready for the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Okay. And if you've spoken before, you may speak again. You get another minute if you'd like. Okay, thank you. Then we're moving on to the action items. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated September 23, 2024. I move to approve the attached Support Staff Union SSU Letter of Agreement indicating changes to Appendix D. Motion to approve Article 14 Workday/Workweek. I move to approve the District 39 Strategic Plan Engage, Empower, Inspire Action Steps for 2024 through 2025. I move to approve, as amended, second and final reading of Board of Education Policies 2:40, 2:60, 2:70, 2:125, 2:140, 2:260, 2:265, 4:15, 4:20, 4:40, 4:70, 4:80, 4:140, 4:165, 4:190, 5:10, 5:20, 5:100, 5:120, 5:130, 5:180, 5:200, 5:310, 6:60, 6:110, 6:140, 6:150, 6:230, 7:10, 7:20, 7:170, 7:180, and 7:185. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between August 27, 2024 and September 23, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $863,523.45. O&amp;M Fund, $142,033.68. Transportation, $1,182.32. Capital Projects, $1,325,460.57. For a total, all funds, $2,332,202. I move to approve the manual checks issued between August 27, 2024 and September 23, 2024 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $878,111.68. O&amp;M Fund, $108,109.42. Total All Funds, $986,221.10.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paley.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. The a's have it, motions carry. We're moving on to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any good and welfare?
Just a quick good and welfare. If you're not at a Committee of the Whole meeting or busy on your Monday mornings, you might want to tune in at 8:52 to the High Crest Broadcast News. It was wonderful. I started my day that way today, and it was so much fun to see all of the kids coming together, forming all of the content, presenting it, understanding the technology, and, you know, splitting out all of the content areas among each other. And I learned about clubs taking place at lunch and after school, and I learned about what's in the lost and found, and the weather, and some sports highlights that I missed yesterday afternoon and evening. And it was just a lot of fun to see them all working together like that. And I have to think about when we go through all of the strategic priorities, the plan, the action steps, and absolutely everything that is taking place in those schools, in those schools' day-to-day, and then to see, you know, something like that on top of it, which is just so positive. So very fun, Monday mornings, 8:52.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
It was fun.
Anybody else? Any good and welfare? Okay. I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session for the discussion of semi-annual review of executive session minutes.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss semi-annual review of executive session minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paley.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Whoops, yes.
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. We are now adjourned to, motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 8:02 PM.